To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with a free and just sprawl.
Okay, nine oh five, we start the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty four lowering the purple tab. We'll go ahead and review the minutes and approve those. Anyone see any additional corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve. Only seconds, there are discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
The opponent? Okay. We've got a little time, you'll do the transfer real quick. Doesn't look like there's very many of them. You might have any questions on those? Any next motion to approve? In a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? We've got time here to do it. Do a couple of additionals here. Three hundred nineteen dollars and ninety eight cents. That is furniture. For the highway. Furniture, yeah. What is that, correct?
I'm pretty sure that's Martin.
Martin. Says nine one one, but he's going.
Do highway.
Yeah. This is number.
Five o'clock.
Yeah. You want me to save this one or you want to go ahead? You want to change it or?
Yes, I could.
Ask him.
Problem now.
Crossed out put nine one to nine one in. It's three hundred nineteen dollars and ninety eight cents. Will I have any questions for? Okay, your can a motion to approve? Ashley next motion to approve. Bill seconds. Any discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fund number twelve twenty two, another nine one one, just going to the highway department. For twenty five hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty nine cents for office supply. Correct? Right, come by and copy that one.
Got that.
Oh, I got that. Yeah, this is your next.
Oh, yeah.
That's the reimbursement for the solar effects.
Solar effects?
Just the twenty hour cap to reimburse those who take her.
Everyone get down. Any questions?
All over time, you say nine one one.
Over.
Yeah.
I make most agree.
Bill makes motion to approve. In seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One more, I think. Travel expense. One oh one ninety nine twenty from the health department. This is a travel reimbursement expense from my district nine healthcare center. Reversing check. Four twenty five and now needs appropriated back into travel expense. One oh one ninety nine twenty.
Make the motion to approve.
Deanna makes motion to approve. Ashley seconds. Any discussion on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing on the lowering of special purpose tax. And L L T and special purpose tax from point six five to point six oh. Everybody get Rubens comments? He couldn't make it. I'll go over them real quick. Oh, reduces special purpose revenue by seven point six nine percent. Revenue from special purpose kept the way it was, was four million, six hundred nineteen dollars, sixty four cents. Reduction from point six five to point six oh. If it would have been done the whole year of twenty twenty four, would have been thirty hundred and fifty five thousand, grand thirteen dollar reduction. Twenty five, the numbers aren't out yet, but I understand it will be pretty close to what at what should be around three hundred and fifty five to four hundred thousand. Seems enough surplus. And any public comment? So reduction.
I'll say thanks for looking into it, making this decision of importance.
Thank you. Doc, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I still move.
Bill makes motion to close. Thirty seconds. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. We vote on that now, Jan? Okay. You want roll call, please? Include maybe? Don't mean enough.
We need a motion to approve.
Yeah, we need a motion to approve. I'll make that one then. Kenny makes motion to approve. In a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Kenny?
Deanna? Ernie?
Aye.
Kenny?
Let me. Okay, here, yeah, I'm sorry.
Actually, aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Melanie?
Aye.
Six seventeen.
Me too. Okay, let's move on to regular business. Let's move on to the next one, which is ordinance to split up the new patio last. Ordinance to split up the interest. Everyone get a copy of that? Which one amounts to is the money that's being invested. The interest will go back into the fund that it's coming out of instead of going all back in. That's okay with the body, and I think you've got set up where we're getting, probably starting in July, June, July? Need whatever.
June or July.
Okay.
July, okay, that's right.
Okay. Get recorded in July on what money's in the, is in that account, and the interest received back in. This is in-home ordinance. And county general will get percentage, get a percentage, special purpose will get a percentage. Cum cap, cumulative capital development, local roads and streets, and highway restricted. You'll be getting your interest back from the money that's been invested instead of going all back into county general. I don't understand that. Hey. Kenny makes a motion to approve is presented. Ashley seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, Jan? Do what? Do what? We made, we've already approved. It's okay. Hey, Emily Burisma.
Good morning, thanks for having us this morning. I'm the executive director of the community healthcare clinic, which is a solution with each assistance. I'm in the past, you always support us, we appreciate that. In the, in this current year, we're celebrating our fortieth anniversary of being a community healthcare clinic. Who provide medical and dental care to residents of Peter County, who either uninsured or underinsured and need to become guidelines. There was a permit for our board of directors that a person who's insured but has hired a doctorable can now be seen at the community healthcare clinic. And that's permitted to be successful for us. We're able to offer four clinics per month for medical needs, and we strive to have ones in total clinic per month, but the limited number of dentists hopefully has could see a challenge there. So we appreciate Dr. Namiak and Dr. Stradler, both don't make up their time and to help out with our residents of Keter County. We also provide the services for the community correctional facility for dental. We have found that the last year, we changed our hours a little bit. Tuesday mornings have not been near as popular. People are going back to work since COVID and we're not seeing patients. So we've kept one Tuesday morning, do everything else on Thursday evenings, and that has increased our numbers significantly by making those changes. Uh, Dr. Knowles sits on our board, he is a dentist, and he also provides the clinic one per quarter and then the assist patients as needed if there is an emergency. Um, over the last year, we were able to serve seventy families in Decatur County, provided a hundred and fifty five medical visits and thirty eight individuals received for dental services. We offer services at a discounted price of ten dollars for a medical visit and four twenty dollars for a dental visit. Uh, we found by offering credit card services, we went from a higher percentage of no pays to only one to pay last year. So although it does cost a little bit extra, we charge that $10 to cover that cost, we have found that people are able to be responsible and pay for those visits as they can. We have also worked very hard to provide some wraparound services, work very closely with plan B and show the care through C M H to help provide assistance, whether it be for lab, x-rays, those kind of things. Uh, and this allows other sources for our patients to become more successful and maintain their independence. Last year, we were fortunate enough to open our patient pantry. It's a food pantry that we offer only to patients of the community healthcare clinic. Uh, we had a seed from First Financial Bank that started in November. They had a food drive within their facility and then offered that as the beginning for our food pantry. That also has been really well received in the clinic. We have a lot of people that hit that in between. They don't really qualify for assistance, but they work hard, they're on offer benefits at their job. And they're very proud people, so they're not ones that are going to go and ask. So the door opens to the pantry, during plant, they can pop in and, you know, get something they may need or just a little food to help out until that next page. Uh, we're in third year, our current location is Pearl King Plaza. We have entered a five-year lease agreement with them. We were on a three-year when we first began. With that five-year, we did experience ten percent increase in rent for this year, but then each year after will only be a three percent increase. In our rent, everything is included except for our phone and internet, so we have limited expense coming out besides our rents each month. Um, within this community healthcare clinic, we work hard on fundraising efforts. This is the first for the community healthcare clinic. Fundraising has never been a priority and it's, our patients maintain the priority, but this is something we're working very hard on. Uh, we just finished our first bigger fundraiser. Um, we had baskets that we auctioned off on Facebook each day, and we had a total of eleven baskets. Raised a little over a thousand dollars. So we're working on fundraising, why is it to replace their dental machines? Um, I couldn't tell you how old they are, but they have significant age on them. Doctor Knowles worked very hard each time he's there to work on them and keep them going. Uh, but we're definitely at a point that we have to replace those. Our goal is twenty thousand dollars uh, to redo that. We, like I said, we did the bids when that was our baskets and just completed that, making a little over a thousand dollars. We're also going to be selling watermelon slices at the fair this year, so I think that would be a successful campaign as well. I also feel like that is great promotion for the clinic as a lot of visitors at the fair will be by there and kind of see what we offer in base targets and with those people that are out there. Um, so we're going to continue. We've been soliciting churches, banks, and those kind of things for donations. We're about thirty percent of our goal at this point. I feel like that's been successful just starting that about three months ago. Um, and then there's also a couple of grants out there we're working towards. We just wanted to have some fundraising under our belt to show that we're doing our part to try and meet that. In the last two years since we started these positions, uh, we worked very hard to increase awareness of the clinic. We work on wraparound services for our patients that we're not just treating medically or dental, or dental needs. We're treating them as a whole. We're treating their families. Uh, we're working to increase fundraising efforts and we're keeping up more independent. We continue to be a county united agency. We're named the farmer agency of the year in two thousand and twenty three. We once again submitted our grants to the United Funds for substantial grant money through the community foundation for items within our office to make it more efficient. Proud of what we're done. We want to continue to do what we do and offer these services to residents of Peter County. So uh, we appreciate any support, get ready to offer, and if you have questions, we'd be happy to answer them for you.
Will I have any questions? Let's see, Doc, you're doing, has Board of Health reached out to you on any?
Um, there's a little discussion, but not, yeah. You know, there's additional funds that'll be coming in there. Department for the work of eighty four, yeah.
I'm trying to talk to them about that a little bit, because they're, they're getting some money in. You know, they're talking about being grants.
Yes.
They know if you qualify for grants.
Yeah.
To them or not.
Uh, I've not heard a lot of details. You know, there was a discussion about mental health, um, through the community foundation along with the Board of Health. Um, looking for partnership there as well, offers some more resources.
Well, that's all there is. I will take a look at it in August.
All right, great. Thank you guys, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, Patty, I'm gonna look to you.
Great.
We want to, you know, by getting copy of the two ordinances for the salary status now? Two one there.
So today, I took me out of uh, somewhere studied, we conducted Wacker, Shealy. Um, this has been a long process. We started this in May twenty three. But there are a lot of steps to go through, so I'm just gonna have recap so you all remember what was done here. So job questionnaires were given to all employees who completed their job questionnaires. Department heads were involved in this process, so when the questionnaires were complete, they came back, department heads reviewed. Corrections made. These were submitted to Wacker and Shealy. And the drafts came back. If there were things that they still thought were not right, that being employees or department heads, and those were corrected again. So we had someone back at work in the process. Department heads had an interview with Wacker and Shealy to discuss any concerns they may have to verify duties of the physicians. So that's all I'm taking. Uh, then we did, I guess, why she like kind of took it from here and started work on the job descriptions, which is seventy five job descriptions, so existing and then someone new. Physicians that were kind of proposed. Uh, they did an F L S A analysis, making sure that we are in compliance with law for exempt and non-exempt positions. And they did a internal wage analysis and salary analysis, so that was then internally within the county. They also did an external analysis, so that would be cities, counties, of other businesses and like physicians. So that's kind of everything that went into it. Then Wacker and Shealy came and met with council, salary committee, and they gave the findings. So you all heard about that. So today, what we have is an ordinance uh, regarding the job descriptions. So this would be to adopt the job descriptions, so seventy five physicians. If they're classified, um, they use the, that factor valuation system as explained. And these will be the job descriptions that we use to, for. Ordinance, if you will. Sign this.
Did everyone get, read that? This is the job description?
Yeah.
Nothing? This is a copy of the job description, correct?
That's the work description. Uh, yes, those are all the physicians.
List of physicians.
They're exempt or non-exempt.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Patty? Any question?
Changes be made in job descriptions fairly easy. Can we change them?
Yes, yes.
Just take those accounting to change it.
I'll have, I'll get to that. Next one. Because there's a maintenance plan.
I'll have to add that one next to it because there's a maintenance plan.
So this ordinance is just changing the job description, basically. The job categorization actually, a document really didn't have, except they were just in a very, by office, by department, so.
Are they, are they known in South Virginia?
Twenty-four dash seven.
Dash seven? What was it? Dash seven, twenty-two forty-four, dash seven. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Concerns? entertain a motion to approve? Or is it going to do that?
I'll make the motion to a third ordinance, four dash seven.
Actually, makes a motion to approve, ordinance twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four dash seven? No, only seconds. Okay, Jan. Will you get it already?
I'll get it already. Sorry.
You're on.
Yeah, yes. Ernie?
All right.
Can he?
Yes.
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 Oh, yes.
Yes. You don't feel one?
Ordinance. Regarding the job classification system and maintenance plan. So this is the factor evaluation system where they went through and they set based on the jobs they were given points. And that's how they put into the categories, so you should all got the description of that. So that's called F B S factor evaluation system. And then the other part of it is the maintenance plan. Maintenance plan is something that we would use for new job descriptions or, as you say, job descriptions that we might need to modify. So that would be done by this committee. And then also the paid, the paid for maintenance plan. So as part of the maintenance plan, what they suggest is that there is a committee of three council members. Pointed by the council, one commissioner, five commissioners, and the auditor, and HR. Our ex officio, non-members. That is all part of the maintenance plan. Questions on that?
Any questions on that?
That committee would make suggestions, then the council would vote on that.
Correct.
You have any problem with that or any questions? This is twenty-four dash eight. Okay, any other questions? entertain a motion to approve? So many next motion to approve?
Second.
Actually, second. Good, Jan.
Deanna?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Any other?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, now. Gonna have to make the decision here. There's a whole lot of sheets on that. Salary study, we need to turn loose. I think we're the only ones that see it locked down. I mean, I'm, I'm asking everybody to get here. A lot of money was spent. And they should have a right to see what's going on. Could you tell me?
What's that?
Nobody's, nobody's seen that study except for a small group. I know that Patty has enough to pass around to all the departments.
You don't have any recommendations yet on how we're dealing with that? For.
So we gotta do something because they, they want the budget to get by the seventeenth, twentieth issue.
Is it better to have this salary or personnel committee need to come up with recommendations and then hand things out or flip flop that process?
That's a question I'm gonna have to hear the salary committee tonight to make.
What she's saying is, do we do that before, or at least have an idea before everybody sees the numbers, so they understand what process is?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
If the salary committee review it, make recommendations, get there and figure out what they're on recommend first and then send them out to the.
Oh, salary committee? Are we talking about three councils and one commissioner, the ones that work on?
I disagree. I disagree. I think that it should be public. We voted on the ordinance that's passed. The ordinance should be public. The study, we thank the study, you know? We understand that the budget time is coming up and we also understand that how things work. So, you know, we've been waiting for a long time on the salary to see what it says.
Well, I think we need to make it very clear that it's just a study.
God.
I think everybody was representing us.
Well, we're not.
The only is goal is what we want to do.
I guess it won't really make the difference. The committee is gonna have to make the recommendations.
Right.
Anyway.
We know.
Regardless of what the department is.
I just don't want to put the auditors in a bind. You know, you have meetings with the salary committee. They don't get anything done until the first of June, the seventeenth, twentieth. When they're supposed to have the budget turned in. You know, it takes Christie what, four weeks, but that's it.
A lot. It's a little time. We can ask the question.
You what?
A lot of times we wait on sound.
I mean, I'm, I'm cutting loose, but that's just me.
It's okay, anybody.
I think you brought up a good point. We need to decide who's going to be making that next decision. Is it the original payroll committee or is it this new committee that we just passed the ordinance on? The new committee is.
It's going to be.
It will be correct.
Yeah. Right.
We just need to have, know what it's gonna be. So first thing, we want to keep the committee as is or restructure the newly passed committee.
I'm hoping suggestions.
See that be the new committee.
We have three, one commissioner, H R, auditor. The only one that would not be on it would be prosecuting agent.
So you would like, that's cannot be existing.
But we probably should go with the new ordinance, should we, three council people? And get that start good.
Okay, good one.
One thing I got there.
They want, they want to say that. They need sort of a big draw.
I mean, Patty said this started in July, it actually started, what, two, two plus years ago?
With the appointees, or those actual council members and commissioners or. Like some of our, like, these do not sit on council commissioners, is the wording.
Three council members appointed by the county council. One commissioner appointed by the board of commissioners. Auditor.
So we need to.
An H R official.
It's officio. Three council members.
They only want the votes.
Obviously.
It's good with your excuse.
Are you staying on?
I will if I'm needed.
You're needing. I haven't done it, but if you want me, I'll do it. Any wants to do that.
I'm gonna have to worry.
Ready?
I think you can do it.
Getting ready to go to Bill, I agree.
I'll make a motion that we put in actually. What is it called?
The salary.
What's it called?
What's the name of the committee?
It's just a review committee.
Compensation, justification, compensation committee.
Yeah, what she said.
Okay. Yeah, we got a motion in a second. All those in favor? Any pose?
I thought you'd say aye. I thought you were gonna say aye.
You don't say nay. Okay.
So I'm just gonna say.
I think we'll have Mark probably. I think Mark, he's not here today. Sell him cat. He's on the damn house call. Tell him he's still on there.
Well, they got a vote, the commissioner got a vote.
Yeah.
Yep. Get on the minutes.
I'd have dragged you man before we got. See, I don't want to cut you over.
Yeah, let's.
That's where, do what? Yeah. June the third, we have a commission meetings.
Well, I could do a.
I'll see what he wants to do. See what tricks he has to do. Okay, anybody else got anything? Okay, budget time. Got August the nineteenth, Department head presenter budget request. I'd like to start that about one o'clock afternoon, if we could, does that meet everybody's? See, Christie. Started about one o'clock in the afternoon.
Yes.
Is that okay with everybody?
How much time do you want?
Not more than fifteen minutes yet. Either they're done quick, hope they line up. And then August the twentieth, be a regular meeting followed by budget workshop. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, seventeenth of September, we have a public hearing on the twenty-twenty-five budget. And October the fifteenth, we'll adopt the twenty-twenty-five budget. Is that all right with everybody? Am I making dates, okay? Yes, sir.
You guys make a decision regarding. Or whether they.
I would like to turn loose myself.
I don't mind if we handed out. It's really not going to help with budgeting until we have a recommendation because some salaries were fine as is. Some had huge increases, there were a lot in the middle. And I don't want to hand it out and people see the numbers for themselves individually and then just expect that whatever the number is, that's what they're.
Well, I think we're smarter than that. We.
I, I was really, so I went through a good state. To go and that's exactly what happened. And people made like decisions based on the number that they saw. If it was really sad and frustrating for a lot of people, so. I mean, as long as we communicated well that that is not the expectation.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Sure, but thank.
I guess the only other thing would be if you're gonna not do it, you have to say, okay, well, we're gonna have a meeting on this date and it will be released following that meeting. At least people have an expectation that it's coming in two weeks rather than, again, more months and months.
Thank you, Nancy. I think. Committee needs to be next week sometime. It just been done. My opinion. If not this week sometime. Need a motion to? Hello? Anybody? So that's the committee meet. Yeah.
So you're gonna wait till after the meeting?
The committee meets.
But the intent is to have a meeting within the next two weeks.
Pretty close.
We can't really make that decision because we don't know the commissioner for sure, so we can't say today, but that's.
Try to find it out today, tomorrow. Okay, entertain a motion, delay it, let the committee meet.
I like that motion.
No much motion.
I'll say.
Thirty seconds. Any other discussion? What he's doing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Nay. Don't count, but I'm good. Okay, anybody else have any course?
Patty, real quick?
Yes, sir.
I'd make this brief. Have a handout for you. This is a copy of the letter presented to commissioners for their May sixth meeting. Our two service contract for our inmates expires June thirteenth. Works by the companies and we came up with Calwell. This letter is kind of outlines the commissioners, what's the contract about, what current contract is. Which commissioners handle contracts, that's why I got to approve that. So bottom line is, being with Calwell, we're currently paying with Kennedy, yet expired June thirteenth. Ten dollar forty-three per meal. Calwell can give us about nine cents per minute. We check with other facilities where they're servicing and their numbers seem to be good. We've also had quality issues during the year later, we've got some part back, we can refund it. And we checked the Calwell, their quality, things is good. So bottom line this year, we're gonna send about forty thousand per year to believe with Calwell. That's concerning, rest of them, if they can be able to hire than that. You can see on the back there, by the worksheet here, it kind of lays out. So I can get approved the contract as the thirteenth, we're gonna change with Calwell. Again, we're spending two hundred and twenty, two hundred and thirty thousand a year right now on meals and mates. Just gonna save us fifty, certainly forty thousand, that's, that's submitting those. So again, no ask required, just information to you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. But. Anybody else have any important? Run? Yeah?
Of views. Oh, what? Indy. Friday. And then. For regional standpoint, for being approved.
From a regional standpoint, convenient approval. The area of possibilities are going to be with LUC next week. Our bigger meeting happening in June to assess all the progress.
So thank you again, Ron.
Yeah.
George?
Yeah. We should.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Danny, that's it. Call the council meeting June twenty-second. Can Danny get registered for that?
And Ken, yeah. And Ken, I'll take that. Twenty-second? You got one? Being kidding. You went up last year. Give me that. Dan will be there. Will you be on location? There you go. Maybe. We pick you.
In the lobby or is it?
No, it's outside of the twenty-second.
Just block a round table.
Yeah.
This is the actual.
It's county.
Yeah.
We are having a meeting June first for all the vendors.
Vendors. Anybody wants to sign it for vendor June first, nine to eleven, at the airport. Anybody have anything else? No, entertain a motion to adjourn. Ben, I got the two, so all those in favor. Billy said, Billy made a motion. Thirty seconds, I'll attack you.